So before we get started with the main presentation, I do just want to note a few emergency preparedness things. There are two points of egress in this room right here and right there. So in front of me and to my left, if people need any assistance, please let us know and staff will assist you in reaching those emergency exits. We do have an AED on hand as well as there are fire extinguishers also to my left. Is anyone here tonight trained in CPR? And if you are, can you raise your hand? All right, we do have someone Darren to my left as well. And if we do need to evacuate tonight, we will be meeting at the in front of the Dunkin Donuts outside the building. So that will be our, our point where we will meet. And with all of that said, hello everyone, and welcome to tonight's public hearing for the bus network redesign project. My name is Reagan Chekia, and I'm going to be serving as a moderator for tonight's meeting. I would like to note that all MBTA activities, including public meetings are free of discrimination. The MBTA complies with all federal and state civil rights requirements preventing discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, limited English proficiency, and additional protected characteristics. We welcome the diversity from across our entire system. If you have any questions or concerns, please visit MBTA.com forward slash title six. That's title VI to reach the Office of Diversity and Civil Rights. I would also like to remind everyone about tonight, about the rules for participating in tonight's meeting. We'll ask that you keep your comments respectful. And I also want to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the project website after the fact. We do have ASL interpreters tonight for the meeting, and we also have interpreters available who are translating the meeting into Spanish and Mandarin. If you require these services, headsets are available at the sign in table. Later in the meeting, we will be accepting written and verbal comments. I will note now that there is going to be a two minute time limit on verbal comments, so we can hear from as many people as possible tonight. You may sign up to make verbal comments at the sign in table outside the room. When you sign up, you will receive a number that indicates where you are in the speaking order. At that point in the meeting, we will ask first ask elected officials to speak, and then we will take comments in order. If you would like to provide written comments, paper forms are also available at the sign in table. And now I would like to introduce Jeff Donaville, the deputy general manager for the MBTA to provide some opening remarks. Jeff?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Certainly want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I will say it is nice to see faces and have everyone here in person. So I am Jeff Conville. I am the deputy general manager here at the MBTA. I've been at the T now for over 20 years. I started in the bus division of the MBTA and really spent the first, first majority of my career at the, at the bus operations division. And I share that with all of you because from, from a bus operation standpoint, we always felt and we always knew that our system could be better, and we always knew that, that we could make some improvements. And this project is something that we really believe in and that we feel really is going to, to, to make an improvement to our bus operations and our bus operation system. I think people call this kind of a generational change of what we're looking to do and what we're going to propose to do. And frankly, from an, from someone on the inside and someone who has worked within the bus operations division for a number of years, just know that this is something that, that we are excited about and really, really looking forward to, to, you know, the changes that are going to go about and really the improvements that we're going to be able to make to our bus system. Many of you are here tonight because you have concerns with some of the proposed maps, concerns with some of the issues. And, you know, one of the things that the general manager has made very clear to myself and the entire team is that we are here to listen. We are here to take everyone's comments. This map that we put forward is, is essentially our team's proposal, and we are collecting all of the feedback. So again, thank you for being here tonight and providing us that feedback. It's my understanding from the team that we've already gotten over 12,000 comments on, on what we have proposed. The team is going to be compiling all of those, those comments. And then from there, begin making some recommendations and those recommendations then would be prepared and submitted back to the MBTA. And then, and then a map then again would be generated and given out to everyone. So I certainly want to close my, my remarks to say, look, this isn't done yet. We recognize that, that we are going to have to make some changes. I think we recognize that many of you that are here this evening have comments and, and again, have areas of concern that you'd like to share with us. And we are here to listen to that. And thank you all for, for coming out and frankly, being here in person. It certainly does show your, your commitment and your, your feelings and for this project. So thank you, everybody. So and now we'll turn it over to Doug Johnson. Doug?
Thank you very much, Jeff. Hi, everyone. My name is Doug Johnson, and I am the project manager for the bus network resign project. Been the project manager for all of the month. So please go easy on me in your public comments. I appreciate that. Let me find my notes here. Three, we go. I just want to start by saying that I am joined by several other staff from the MBTA tonight. If you have specific questions about proposed changes to routes, we have folks from our service planning department here. We have Rob Guptel, the director of service planning over there at that table. He's happy to walk you through any of the proposed changes that we have in the map. So we'd really love to have a dialogue with you about some of those and take your comments on them. That's really why we're here tonight is to listen to all of you. To, to reiterate a point that Jeff made, our map as it is now is just a proposal. It's a draft. We are going to make meaningful changes to that map based on all of the public feedback that we've gotten over the last three months since it's been open for public comment. So when we go to release the final map later this fall, you will see changes made in response to the feedback we received. I can't promise that we're going to be able to change everything and respond to every single request that we get. But we're going to do our best to really improve the map as much as we can. We know it's not perfect now as is, and that's been made very obvious to us by the public feedback that we've gotten. We're going to take that feedback very, very seriously and come back to you in the fall with what we hope is a much better map than what we have proposed now. The presentation for tonight is going to be pretty short. I hope that many of the folks here tonight have attended some of the other public meetings that we've had. I'd say at the virtual public meetings that we've held, we averaged around 200 attendees at each of those. And we also mixed that with in-person outreach as well, because we know that not everyone can attend a virtual meeting. So hopefully folks here are familiar with the proposal, have already had a chance to look at the map and are here to make comments tonight about it. So the presentation is going to be short because we really want to dedicate as much time as we can to listening to all of you. So I'm guessing that it'll probably take about 20 minutes or so, and then we'll open it up to public comments. There we go. So I hope folks are already familiar with this, but to reiterate, the bus network redesign is a complete reimagining of the MBTA's bus network to reimagine it in a way that will better serve travel in our region and the demand to get around. As folks know, in the last couple decades, new employment centers have opened up. We have housing in places that we didn't have before, places that were formerly industrial. People are living and working in different places than they were decades ago. And the bus network hasn't evolved in that time. It hasn't really changed besides some really minor adjustments over that time. And it's not effectively meeting the demand for travel because of those changes to land uses in the area. So the goal of this process really is to better align the bus network so that it does meet the needs of communities and of the region. We've been listening to folks, getting feedback from folks about the bus network, about how the current bus network operates, what would make the bus network better, like what people really want to see from that system. We've been listening to folks give us their feedback on this all the way back since 2018, when we launched the Better Bus Project and started making some minor modifications to the bus network. And in that time, what we've really heard from folks is that they want the bus network to take them where they want to go, when they want to go there. It needs to be simple and easy to understand and use. It needs to be fast, frequent and reliable, and it needs to serve the people who need it most. So when we approached the process of redesigning the bus network, really decided to, to lead with equity. We know that there's a lot of systemic inequity in the built environment and in our region. It's a legacy of segregation and racist policies and a whole host of, of other factors. And we really wanted to make sure that we could lead with equity in this process and really try to make a bus network that was more equitable than what we have today. We wanted it to prioritize the needs of the people who depend upon it most. And we wanted to make sure that we were providing service that was frequent and reliable, especially to the places where, you know, the most people live, the most people work, where the most trips are being made. And, and even more specifically, where the folks who depended on it most lived. We want to have more all day service, seven days a week. As you know, right now, like a lot of these bus routes, they're really good in the mornings on weekdays and really good in the evenings on weekdays. But in the midday, they're not very frequent or necessarily very reliable. On Saturdays and Sundays, the same thing is the case. So we're really trying our best to address that, to make sure that we have frequent all day service, seven days a week, so that no matter what time you go to catch the bus, like you know, it's going to come frequently and reliably, whether it's weekday or weekend, morning, afternoon, or otherwise. Part of that too is because we know the travel patterns have changed and we're trying to respond to that as well. As I mentioned, we also want to have new connections to more places, those new neighborhoods, those new employment centers, housing areas that have formed in the last couple decades, we're trying to respond to that new demand. And finally, we wanted to make a network that's simpler and easier to understand. If you use the bus service now, you know that sometimes there's route variations or deviations depending on the time of day or the day of the week that you use it, and that creates a really complicated system that's really difficult for people to use. If you don't know if your bus is going to actually go to the same destination at any given time during the day, it makes it much less reliable and harder to use. So that's something that we're trying to address by simplifying the system, providing more frequent service that honestly, for a lot of these routes, the goal is to make it so frequent that you don't ever have to consult the schedule. You just know that if you go to that bus stop in less than 10 minutes, a bus is going to be there. So to that point, we are doubling the amount of high frequency service in the network. Right now, there are 15 corridors in the network that meet our definition of high frequency. We want to double that to 30 in the new network. That's 50% more high frequency service on weekdays and 70% more, if I recall correctly, on weekends. So there are communities, you can see these two maps, the map on the left shows you the existing network. The roots in blue are the high frequent routes. You can see that there are huge swaths of our service area that don't have frequent service all day, seven days a week, especially places like Everett, Malden, Medford, and honestly, even a lot of Somerville. As well as places south of, you know, downtown Boston as well and to the west. So we're trying to address those issues. You can see the map on the right. We've much better coverage of high frequent service throughout the Boston region. And I do want to note that on these maps, we're not showing the services that would be lower frequency. That would be, you know, every half hour, every hour. So these maps don't show the true extent of the proposed network. It's just focused on that, those high frequency routes. There are a lot of benefits to this proposed network, and I, you know, acknowledge that it is not perfect as it is. We've heard so many comments from folks about so many of the routes and things that we know we need to make better or address. And there's a lot of folks here tonight who are going to talk about the 55, the 39 roots in Somerville, like the 89, like I, I've already heard many, many comments and I'm here to hear, here to, you know, listen to even more of them. I want to hear them all. So does our project team. And we've been hearing them throughout this process and we're taking them to heart. We really are going to make changes to our map based on what we're, we're hearing from all of you. But the, the map as we've proposed it has a lot of benefits. With this new map, 275,000 more people would be near high frequency service versus what exists today. That includes 115,000 more people of color and 40,000 more low income households. We're also, in order to make this map work as we've proposed it, we actually need to have an across the board increase in high in bus service. Excuse me. So we were talking about a 25% increase in bus service across the board versus what we provide today. That is a massive investment in public transportation and the bus network in order to make this happen. To the point about making better connections to new employment centers, this table on the slide shows four locations and the number of people who would receive high frequency service to those locations above what exists now. So for the Longwood Medical Area, 200,000 more people would have access with high frequency routes. The South Boston Waterfront, it's 180,000 more people. For Back Bay, it's 50,000 more people. And for Kendall Square, it's approximately 58,000 more people. So there's a lot of benefits to this network as we've proposed it. Fundamentally, it is a better network than what it exists today. But as I continue to reiterate, we know that it is not perfect. And we are relying on the input from all of you to help us improve it. We've received a wide array of comments on every single, every single route out there, ranging from folks saying like, yes, the increased frequency on this route is welcome and we need it to, you know, this route is moving a block away and that creates accessibility issues for us. Like we need you to reconsider that and look at that. So these are all things that we're taking to heart and we're keeping in mind as we go through this process. The public outreach process that we've conducted for the last three months has literally been one of the most extensive public engagement efforts the MBTA has ever undertaken in its entire history. And I can say that with confidence based on the sheer number, bless you, the sheer number of labor hours that went into it, the number of events that we did and the volume of feedback that we've received. So we have an online feedback form. Hopefully you've all submitted comments on it. The slide says that we've received over 10,000 comments. When I checked earlier today, it was something like 13,000 comments. So it's already going up and I know that will go up even more before the public comment period closes Sunday night. We held focus groups in person with community organizations that were attended by over 300 people. We did eight virtual regional public meetings. We've held 10 meetings of our external task force. The next one of those will be coming up this fall. We held over 30 meetings with municipalities. We did 13 street team events and 12 station open houses across the network at different locations. So those are all in-person events. We had over 20 briefings with elected officials. We advertised this process in multiple languages and newspapers, radio, on buses, in stations with digital boards. And we also recently started running audio announcements on buses because we knew that despite how extensive this effort was, there were still going to be folks that hadn't heard about it, hadn't had a chance to weigh in, and we wanted to make sure that everybody really had that chance before the comment period closed. So like right now, if you go ride a bus, if you sit on that bus for a long period of time, you will hear an announcement in between stops coming up that says, the MBTA is in the process of redesigning the bus network. Please give us comments and the website is listed. So we're really trying our best to make sure that as many people know about this as physically possible. To the point I made earlier about those virtual public meetings, like we know that that doesn't work for everybody. That ultimately, if we really want to reach everybody, we have to meet them where they are on their time, right? So that's why we had the station open house events, or excuse me, the station open house events and the street team events. We, teams of MBTA staff went to different stations, disseminated information about this project, handed out information about the route changes, the proposed changes, talks to folks, talked to folks about it, excuse me. This slide is just a sample of photographs from some of those events. So we went to rapid transit stations, bus stops all over the network to try to reach as many people as we could. So what are our next steps? Where do we go from here? Well, the public comment period for this stage closes at the end of the month, but that's not the end. And that's certainly not the end of our public outreach process either. In August and September, we are going to review every single comment that we got on the draft map, every bit of feedback that we received, and we're going to, our teams are going to sit down and look at the proposed network and devise, divide, excuse me, devise ways to update that map based on the feedback that we got. We anticipate that process is going to take us two and a half months or so. And we'll be coming back to you all in the fall, maybe October, hopefully, to present to you an updated map that reflects many of the changes that folks requested throughout this process. As I said, I can't promise that we'll be able to meet every demand and we'll be able to make every change. But we know that we'll be making the map better over that period of time and that what we bring to you in October will be a better map than what we've proposed to you in May. We'll present that to the public and to the MBTA Board of Directors. We'll do some additional analysis on the map then, have some more public outreach and then hopefully really finalize the map before the end of the year. And then this will move into implementation and implementation is going to be a process, of course. You can't do something this extensive overnight. We anticipate that the implementation process for this is going to take approximately five years and it's going to be phased. So we'll make changes every year throughout that five year process up to the point where the implementation of that map is complete. So you won't see changes right away. You know, some routes may start changing in 2023. Some routes may not change until a couple of years into that process. And when we go to make those changes every year, there'll be public outreach related to those. We'll communicate to all of you what the changes are, when they're coming ahead of time so that folks know and can prepare for those. So there's going to be public outreach really through every phase of this process. And there is a few things that, you know, we're sticking to, bless you. As we go through the implementation process, every bus stop, every new bus stop that exists is going to be accessible. We're going to make sure that transfer locations between bus and rapid transit are accessible. And if we have situations where it's not currently accessible, we're going to find out how to make it accessible and what the, you know, alternate routing is in the meantime, until that transfer can be made accessible. We're going to be looking at capital improvements all over the system, places where we really need bus lanes, things like transit signal priority. That's where a bus can, can make a red light turn green so that the bus can get through an intersection more quickly. We're going to be looking to implement measures like that across the network in order to really make the bus system as reliable as we want it to be. So it's going to be an iterative process and an extensive one. And we hope that you continue to stay involved in it and continue to give us feedback throughout it. During that, you can continue to stay informed. You can receive emails from us if you don't already. If you go to our project website, you can sign up for emails. There's going to be information disseminated through email, through audio announcements, through lots of different means during that process. So we want you to stay informed and stay involved, and we want to be able to provide as much information as we possibly can to you. And that I think is the end of the presentation. And with that, I think I was 15 minutes. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Reagan Chekio to moderate.
So we're about to go to the public comment portion of the evening. For those of you who would like to make verbal comments tonight, who have not yet signed up, I would encourage you to go to the sign in table and sign up. We will be taking comments in order that we will be, although we will be taking elected official comments first. If you do want to provide written comments, especially as there is a two minute limit on the verbal comments tonight, we do have paper forms available at the sign in table. You can do that. You can also use our feedback form. I'm going to leave this slide up while we do the comment portion of the evening because it has all of the website links where people, where you could hopefully get your resources for the project. I will also remind everyone that Rob Guptel is at this table sort of midway through the room. If you have specific questions about a roof or a neighborhood map that you would like to have a technical question answered tonight. Outside the room, we also have a lot of materials, maps of neighborhoods of the proposed map. Please feel free to ask any staff and you can pick up those materials and take them home with you if you want to look at them in more detail. I'm excited that we're having an in-person meeting for the first time in a really long time. So we're excited to give handouts that are non-digital in nature tonight. So with that being said, I am going to shift to this microphone. Is this working, Anthony?
Can everyone hear me? All right. So I will speak a little bit more loudly. I am going to stand at this point and I'm going to call some people. I'm going to call people in advance to let them know your number is coming. So first we'll start with elected officials. I see councillor Bach is first and representative Idar Hoven will follow her. So councillor Bach? Great. Thank you so much to the MBTA and thank you to all the members of the public for being here and special shout out to the 55 bus contingent in the corner who had to organize a carpool together to get here, but if the 55 bus were still running on its pre-pandemic hours and schedule would have been able to take that to get here. I, I really want to, I do want to really thank the team, a bunch of things for stress tonight that I agree with, like going to this huge surge in frequency for buses. It's huge for our bus riders. And as the councillor for the LMA, I think giving people that access to medical services and also medical jobs is really critical. And I also know that many of the types of sort of bus priority, bus rapid transit lanes, et cetera, that we're going to rely on for reliability in the network are going to be things that involve conversations with the city of Boston and the T, and I'm looking forward to partnering on that. What I really want to stress however, is that we can't come out the other side of this process with a world where everyone crosses through the Fenway and yet the people who live in the West Fenway are stranded and unable to get downtown in a way that they have relied on and built their lives on. And so I just really want to stress that it's critical for us that the 55 bus continue to provide that service to Copley Square, frankly, ideally beyond. So again, you could get to this meeting to Park Street like it used to run. But I just, I think that that's really something that so many people I represent have built their lives on. And also I think we just have a huge number of really low mobility people there. And then the other line that I'll just mention really quickly is the 39, the 39 also runs in my district. That bus came in as a civil rights replacement for losing the E-line to the Arbor Way 30 years ago, 40 years ago. And, and just so many people also rely on that. So want to make sure we get some of these critical lines right. And I'm going to continue the advocacy, but thank you so much to the T for your partnership and looking forward to it. Thank you councillor. Appreciate that. Representative Idar Hoven, that's great. One thing I will note is if actually you want to face this direction, it helps with the camera work and Amanda right there is, is helping us out with some.
Thank you. Um, my name is Erica Idar Hoven. I'm the, sorry, you want me to face this way? Okay. Okay. My name is Erica Idar Hoven. I'm the state representative from the 27th Middlesex and represent a district that's entirely in Somerville. So my comments will be limited to how it's, this bus redesign is impacting Somerville. I'm also joined by my colleagues here from State Senator Pat Jalen and Rep Barber to also share their comments because we do have about 2,000 signatures from our constituents about concerns with the redesign. But I do want to uplift a few points, you know, particularly just as we speaking from the point of the legislature that this is a, you know, ongoing piece. I understand that the MBTA is under stress in terms of funding and resources, and that is something that we are committed to working with you to ensure that we're fully funding as well as with hopefully the incoming of the fair share amendment, as well as of course, changes in administration that, you know, we continue to keep an open mind around not cutting bus services because I think that is a really big piece of the Somerville part that has been quite detrimental. So, and I wanted to uplift just two pieces from the Community Action Agency of Somerville and the Somerville Transit Equity Partnership that have done extensive feedback, particularly for some of our most vulnerable residents. And to uplift your commitment to equity first, the proposal currently as it stands underserves the neighborhoods of residents who need the bus service most. Although the proposed redesign makes it easier for riders and surrounding communities to travel in and out of Somerville, the bus network
to travel in and out of Somerville, the bus network for the residents that currently use to travel within the city is really limited. And just to highlight a few pieces around the, you know, particularly connection between the north-south route within Somerville, we do have incredibly steep hills. And so in terms of an accessibility point, you know, and for our elderly residents and disabled residents, that's something we hope we can, you know, add into the, the proposal. As well as just to put a feedback around the few bus routes that are connecting from the New Green Line stations, as well as the Assembly Station. We're hoping that this can be an opportunity for some multimodal transportation to increase these intercity connections and provide flexibility in travel options. And largely with the current, you know, the design, for people who are not near the Green Line station, they're gonna have a lot more longer travel times difficulty. And they tend to be places where we have some of the biggest, you know, large number of low-income residents. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Senator Jalen, and following the senator will be Representative Barber.
Thank you. I'm Pat Jalen. I represent, what am I doing? Oh! I'm Pat Jalen. I'm a senator for Medford, Somerville, parts of Cambridge and Winchester. And I'm here with, I wonder if my constituents would stand up for Medford, who've been collecting signatures. And in just a short time, they will be bringing to you over 2,000 signatures from Medford and Somerville that they have collected door-to-door. And so my message to you is really listen to them. Extend the process. Don't make the decision until you've given people a chance to really understand. They find people who don't know about the Better Bus Project. Sounds really good when they hear they're gonna lose their bus service. Sounds really bad. So you need to give us the data that allowed it, people to make these decisions or that will allow people to make these decisions. Give us the data and listen to people about what their options are. They're happy about the increased service. But if it doesn't help them, they wanna know what is their alternative to get to the Green Line, the Red Line, and Assembly Road. So that's what we would like to have happen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christine Barber. I am the state representative for parts of Somerville and Medford. I also wanna really thank the constituents who are here, who have done so much work in going door-to-door and spreading the word about this process and really getting a lot of input from neighbors who are really directly affected by this. So in my district, particularly in the hillside neighborhood of Medford, there are a number of gaps in ability to get both around Medford and to other communities. And then in Somerville, there's many gaps to get from West Somerville, particularly communities that are, have many low-income folks and people of color to get to grocery stores, to get to work with, both within Somerville and in other local communities. Finally, in Winter Hill, there is a fairly large hole in existing bus service that is critical and crowded right now. So overall, there is much more to do to outreach to folks. Ensure that we're providing language access options that as many people as possible know about these potential changes and can weigh in. So I'd ask that you slow the process, continue to take comments, continue to do outreach to really get out there and make sure we're hearing from folks 'cause this will impact their ability to get groceries and to get to work and school. Thank you.
We would like to suggest that you have in-person meetings because not everybody has internet access, but they, in each district, that people could come and hear and respond to the particular issues in their district.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. So we're gonna move into the general public comment portion of the evening. And I'm gonna read out the, sort of, the first three numbers that are gonna come up. And I'll ask if you can kind of queue up in front of me a little bit. We're gonna start with numbers 29, 30, and 31. Number 29 is Jean Gobby would be our first comment. Hi, Eugene. Hi. So I'm gonna let you know Amanda here will give you a signal when it's, when the time is running down.
We could get that a try. I live in Somerville along Highland Avenue. Have only been here a few years. I used to live on Com Ave. And so I know what the trolley's like. But I am disappointed to see the 88 canceled because the 90, for instance, doesn't go to Leachmere Station. Doesn't appear to go to any of the new Green Line stations. And the 90 is replacing the 88 for most of its route. And it apparently, I can't tell what the frequency is, but I do know that it's going through a lot of complicated streets. And it would be easy for it to get tied up and broken down. And I hope that will be taken into account. The other thing is, I really like the Galleria Mall, but it's really difficult to get, get to, particularly since they moved the Leachmere stop on the Green Line across that grass highway. I like this new idea of the bus service between Kendall and Leachmere, the T-101. But with the 88 being removed from that area, you can't access the 101 unless you use the Red Line. So I would like to see those changes. So the other thing is that I really like the idea of the smartphones being used for the timing on the buses. And I would like to see more timing signs in the out section of Davis Square, the T there. Because, I mean, the inside, because they do have it on the outside for the 90 and so on. I'd like to see it on the other side for the 88. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. So number 30 is Allison Pultinas. And if you, in the queue, if we could have number 31 and number 32.
Thank you. Oh, you have no. Thank you. My name's Allison Pultinas, and I live in Mission Hills, the backside of the hill. And I'm gonna speak about two things. Primarily, the 14 bus that right now serves the VA Hospital on He Street. And the redesign takes it away. And I was really struck by two things that were said earlier. To serve the people who need the service the most, right? So the VA Hospital serves very veterans and has expanded services. There are new buildings there. And the staff who work there use the bus, patients use the bus. Taking the bus away means that they have to rely on the 39 or the E train in order to get to Roxbury. Does that make sense? No. You're taking a one-seat ride away from those patients and that staff. And that's critical. It's making them use the 39 or the E train and transfer to the 66 for crosstown service. And that transfer would have to happen at an inaccessible stop, very uncomfortable stop, Fenwood Road, Brigham Circle, where there's, Fenwood has no benches, narrow sidewalk. And of course, it means a wait for a long transfer that right now they have direct service to Nubian Square and beyond. The 14 goes all the way to Rosendale. However, it's the service to Roxbury that matters the most. So I'm pleading with you, please don't take it away from He Street. You have public housing, you have a public school there, the Henigan School. And I want to applaud Counselor Bach's support for 55 riders. I too support their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, number 31, Ally Hippel. Hippel, I'm sorry. And in the queue, 32 and 33.
Thank you. My name is Ally Hippel. I'm a policy analyst with the Conservation Law Foundation. CLF first wants to congratulate the MBTA for this once-in-a-generation proposed bus network redesign. We understand that the transit system is complex and interconnected, just like our communities, and that any approach to redesign is going to be both full of opportunities and challenges. But with that said, this testimony is intended to highlight issues that have come to light during the public comment period. First, we request that the public comment period be extended by three weeks to August 21st. As many have pointed out already tonight, and as we've seen, we've encountered many people throughout this comment period who have not heard of bus network redesign or only recently learned about it, many of whom are members of or represent transit-dependent populations. Additionally, the T staff first stated that they would welcome comments throughout the summer. But then at some point in the first week of July, announced a comment deadline of July 31st. A longer comment period would allow more riders to learn about the proposal and provide meaningful feedback. In addition, there remain many unanswered questions that have been raised during the comment period related to bus electrification, reaching Massachusetts decarbonization goals, and a system-wide low-income fare, which are three key targets that are related to bus network redesign. If the Commonwealth is to meet our climate mandates, then the redesign should include alignment with the bus electrification plan with specific procurement deadlines. And just a few final points. First, the proposed route changes should not impede a community's ability to access social services, economic opportunities, or each other. Second, community engagement is an opportunity, not just an obligation. We urge the MBTA to continually evaluate its public engagement processes to better incorporate feedback from riders, municipalities, and other advocates. The MBTA must engage with representatives of affected communities as co-creators rather than just as users of the system. And finally, we really urge, you've mentioned it many times tonight, but really centering equity prioritizing service and expanding service.
Thank you so much, Ally. Marie Fukuda, and then in the queue, number 33 and number 34.
Hi. Thanks so much for this opportunity to comment. I'd like to thank the Bus Network redesign team for their outreach to the Fenway neighborhood. Our communities face serious challenges to transit access with 55 bus cuts. And we understand that our elected representatives and the redesign team have goals to improve systems delivery for taxpayers and residents. As the team can attest to, Fenway participation has been robust. We've had sessions afforded to us to lay out our concerns and discuss possible modifications. You've heard overwhelmingly about the need to continue service downtown from the West Fenway. And I'd like to put my own voice behind that request as a representative of Fenway Civic Association, the Fenway's oldest all-volunteer civic group, and underscore three items I feel have been overlooked. Firstly, transit studies in the city have never adequately taken into account what occurs in the Fenway more than a third of the days of the year. Fenway Park games and events that swell our numbers by 30,000 people on a regular basis. When you're asking a senior to both walk half a mile as well as be subjected to overcrowded conditions that we know happen at Fenway Park, that's not fair or equitable. The addition of MGM Theater, which is promised to deliver another 5,000 people most days of the year, will only add to such pressures. The MBTA should be considering the unique challenges of Fenway residents when envisioning long-term service needs. Secondly, a 55 bus study performed by the Red Sox as part of their MGM development yielded important information, namely that riders in the West Fenway were overwhelmingly headed downtown and that a reroute to Cambridge would not be of use for their ridership. Residents choose where they live based on a large part of what transit services are offered for them and where they need to go for employment. What this means is that you're negating the entire neighborhood's needs and essentially saying it's okay to require everyone to be inconvenienced and ill-served in order to cater to a completely different set of prospective residents and employees. I believe that transit is meant to serve people who are living in communities. Lastly, as many of us mentioned, the Fenway is experiencing an explosion of development unparalleled in any other neighborhood I know of. One project in discussion alone is comprised of over 13 parcels over five and a half acres. That's just one. We have a massive air rights project, another on the way. By the way, this also includes growth and employment, including in life sciences. I'm almost done. If the bus network team's looking for long-term sustainability, it should look at our unique position with event-based crowds, identify needs for destination.
I'm sorry, we do have to keep to two minutes. Thank you, Marie. So next, we have Paul Aikenhead. And in the queue, number 34 and number 35. I am actually gonna switch my arms.
Yes, my name is Paul Aikenhead. I'd like to mention what's called the Urban Ring Transit Corridor, which is something that's been well-understood for decades and decades. And I would also like to point out that the revised map as of today dissolves a significant portion of that corridor from Roxbury to Cambridge and onto Somerville. There is existing in that corridor right now, the CT2 bus and the 47 bus. Those are the only two bus routes that cross the Charles into Cambridge. And in one case goes on to Somerville. They're gone without a replacement. This means that a very significant corridor that, yes, a very significant corridor that connects high-tech employers, and I can tell you from my daily commuting, is very highly patronized. It's not there anymore. So I urge you to consider this hole that I've noticed in the proposal and take note of the fact that there are no longer any buses on this map from Roxbury or Ruggles Street to Cambridge. There are a lot of people who get off commuter trains, the Orange Line, or the bus routes at Ruggles. They will no longer have the CT2 or the 47.
Thank you, Paul. Hannah Belcher is next. And then I think in the queue is number 35 and number 36.
Hi, my name is Hannah Belcher. I'm on the town council in Winthrop. I'm gonna try and keep it to two minutes, so I might talk a little fast. All right. While Winthrop is markedly different in its layout and logistics from many other MBTA communities, our residents' reliance on public transit is no less important than those in areas with a larger population and ridership. The MBTA received a letter from our council opposing the changes to the bus network in Winthrop. While we understand and appreciate the spirit of the project, Winthrop has not changed in the ways that necessitate such a drastic redesign of our bus routes. This redesign cuts out an entire portion of Winthrop, almost 90% of the precinct that I represent. This design asks riders to walk up to two miles from the bus stop to their homes, our beaches, or the Deer Island Harbor Walk. It also fails to acknowledge the tight and crowded roadways of Winthrop posing public safety hazards as well. As a representative of the town of Winthrop, I'm imploring the MBTA to revisit the network redesign for the entirety of Winthrop with a focus on retaining service to the Point Shirley neighborhood, increasing the level of service and accessibility for our residents, and ensuring the efficient and safety of bus movement within our already strained roadways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, 35 is Evan Foss. And then in the queue, if we could have number 36 and number 37.
Hi, my name's Evan Foss. I'm an engineer. I live in Newton. I am concerned about the bus network redesign's map, but also whether or not it will be compatible with trolley buses in the event that the battery-powered buses you're looking to switch to don't work out. In the map, you've already got part of the proposal for having two different types of bus because some of the bridges are too narrow. The point of buying the battery-powered bus, at least half of it, was to have a single type of vehicle. The other point was to be carbon neutral. Well, your battery-powered bus already needs to be retrofitted to have a diesel-powered heater added on, so it's not carbon neutral. And then the model you chose, the XE40, one of those just burnt to the ground and melted to a bus facility floor out in Connecticut. So I'm really losing faith in that particular model of bus. Paris and Stuttgart, Germany, both tried battery-powered buses as well. They've got, forgive me for saying, better safety records right now. And they've also had to pull them all from service after fires. Please reconsider the trolley bus phase-out. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Number 36 is Cameron Pickton. And then in the queue, we have number 37 and number 38.
Hi. I just wanted to say I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know I'm a resident of West Medford and have been for the past five years. We have a bus that takes us to Davis Square, the 94, and that's gonna be redirected. A bus that takes us to Leachmere, the Green Line, to the Green Line. And that's, that's gonna go, gets 80. And I just say that a lot, it seems like a lot of people live around there, and it works great for us. And I would just hope, I would just encourage, if there's any, any chance to put those back, to not, to not get rid of those, it would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cameron. Louise Baxter? Welcome. And then in the queue, if we could have number 38 and number 39.
Okay. Yeah, like, I'm a member-
Okay, yeah, like I remember the T Riders Union mass senior action, and we have questions on equity. We, we don't, like, cell phones, daddy, a lot of elderly don't have cell phones. We feel a lot of the routes are being taken, are low-income routes. You talk about taking traffic away. And it's been shown that when you take traffic away, that, that, that does not help the transit dependent. And you may take that out, and we think there's a mega equity issue. Because a lot of the, like, Bus 11 that's been cut in South Boston is the one with the highest percentage of elderly and low-income in South Boston. You know, and 10 is cutting somewhat, too. Mine's nine, which is not being cut, and it has the lowest percentage of low-income people because they're cutting out stuff to supermarkets, to hospitals. And like he talked about 47, my complaint is I use that to get to Boston Medical. And we have a complaint that's cut service for 11 to New England, Tuscaloosa Medical Center and Boston Medical, which are safety net hospitals that more of the poor people use. And we think, and like the T12 connection where I would have made, was in Mass Cast, a dangerous area that we, we have to think about. And we think you need to do much better on outreach. And not just say bus network design. People don't know what it means. Put signs on the bus routes that are going to be done. I just talked to somebody the other day. She's elderly. She doesn't have the internet, and she doesn't live in a housing project or senior housing, and this is really going to affect her. I didn't even talk about a bus driver that doesn't know about it. So I, I actually do extend the outreach. And I support the 55 people because I lived in Fenway one time. But we feel equity is being ignored.
Thank you, Louise. Okay, next we have Anita Nagum, and then it's followed by in the queues, number 39 and number 40. So Anita?
My name's Anita Nagum. I live in Medford. And first, I'd like to say that reeval, re-evaluating the bus network is certainly a very worthwhile goal. However, this proposal and the manner in which it was done, especially the public notification, have been unacceptable. Every route in Medford and Somerville is either going to be eliminated or rerouted. Changes of this magnitude are not necessary. I'm going to present you with a petition signed by 2,026 people from Medford and Summer, who use the buses in Medford and Somerville, who oppose to, oppose these changes. I have noticed the glowing terms in which you speak of both the plan development and your outreach process. And I am here to tell you that that shows how out of touch you are with the average bus rider. There are small, a small group of us did outreach using our own resources on our own time. We spread the word about this proposal in Medford and Somerville. Electronic messages at Park Street, which flashed for a few seconds, were completely inadequate. The announcements that you're making on the buses right now are usually inaudible, and they mean nothing to people who don't know already about the BNRD. The details of this plan need to be known, made known to everyone. I've spoken with hundreds of people over the past few weeks. Fewer than five had heard of this independently. Most people are stunned by the changes and by the lack of notification. And I hope you will consider the cynicism and lack of trust in government that this has fueled. So many people have said to me, oh, they're just going to do what they want anyway, and they don't care about us. You need to be putting posters in every T station and on every subway line. There should be flyers and on every bus route that could potentially be affected. There should be notices at every bus stop. There will be a cost involved, but it will be a drop in the bucket compared to what you have spent on consultants already. And that needs to be done before any finalization of this plan is done.
Thank you. So, are you Angela Murphy? Oh, Mary, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're next. And then in, in the queue, we have number 40 and number 41, so apologies.
I worked together with Anita, the previous speaker. And of that petition that she just turned in, I personally went door-to-door and collected 1,500 of those signatures. And I spoke to all those people. 95% of them were shocked, had no idea that this was happening. And the other 5% only heard about it because we had posted signs at all the bus stops. And of those 10,000 that have sent in comments, you should check and see who was commenting on the 80, the 94, and the 96 bus. Because if you have a large percentage of people commenting on those buses, it's because of us. The people who've moved to this area many years ago, and more recent ones, moved here because of the transit service we had available in this area. They've, they've rearranged, they bought houses here, they've arranged for jobs, they've arranged for childcare here. They've sent their children to local schools. We have multiple senior housing in this area. We have Walklin Court in Medford. We have the Visiting Nurses Association Building in Somerville. We have the Capen Court. We have Temponi Manor. In Arlington Center, we have a huge senior citizen population. We're talking hundreds of seniors here, many of whom do not have cars, and rely on these three routes that, you know, it takes them around the city, not necessarily going to Boston, but to do errands around the city. The senior center is in Medford Square. The supermarkets are on this bus route. Our library, we just built a huge library in Medford Square with an auditorium that has very limited parking. So this bus, the 94 bus that's being cut off from Medford Square, would not allow people to go there. We have a Chevalier Auditorium, which is an entertainment venue, limited parking. And Medford Square is also impacted by 93. The traffic that comes off of 93 impacts the, in Medford Square. So we need bus access to get people to Medford Square because they cannot drive there because they cannot park there.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. Now Angela Murphy, right? Okay. And then the queue is number 41 and number 42. I'm going to switch sides.
My name is Angela Murphy, and I'm also with Anita and Mary Ann. I live in Memphis, 66 years of the same house. We moved in 1956 because my father worked for the T at the time and did not drive, and neither did my mother. And we grew up there because of the buses, the 94, 96, and 80 in particular. And growing up in Memphis, we relied on those buses. Now I'm going to tell you other people we met, taking the survey with all those names and the petition. We met a neighbor who was 86 years old, who was still able to use a walker and get to his bus stop at the corner of Winston Street and George Street. If that bus stop is moved, he literally loses his independence to get anywhere in Memphis. Another person I know, and I'm not just talking about Memphis, I work in Woben, is myself. I heard the 134 is being affected. If that bus is being affected, I will not be able to get to Woben because I live in a drive-in now. I don't drive a lot of places and everything. I'm 71. And my income will be nil because I'll have to quit my job. Another nun I heard is in Woben also, is the 354. An autistic woman who takes the bus every day because she can't drive will take that bus. Her bus stop is going to be moved. Her routine and her livelihood is gone. My grandson, another autistic child, he lives on Cambridge Street. He wants to get a job at the Burlington Mall. If his bus route that goes by his house is moved or eliminated, he can't drive. And another young girl who goes to Arlington Catholic cannot take the 80 bus to Arlington Catholic anymore to go to school. You're not helping people by moving these buses or eliminating them. So basically, if it ain't broke, and a lot of people, and you've got over 2,000 signatures there saying it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you so much, Angela. Helen Schwickraff? In the queue, I'll note, it's number 42 and number 43.
Hi, I'm Helen Schwickraff, and I had the honor of working with Anita over the last two weeks collecting signatures for Somerville. But when I first learned about these changes, and I was speaking to people on the bus, the 89, which is slated for elimination, and there's no, if you take the 89 now, this is what you do in its place, there's no replacement on this. So I was explaining to riders, well, they need to go, you need to go up to Medford, get off the bus, cross the street. I don't know if there's going to be shelter there in clement weather, but then come down on the bus into Davis Square. Response, how am I going to get to work? How am I going to get to the doctor? How am I going to meet up with my friends? Why are they taking my bus away from me? I moved to this community because, this part of Somerville, because the 80 and the 88. This is, and somebody else, I don't have access to a supermarket without the 80 and the 89. What am I supposed to do? So you're hearing a lot about this, and I really appreciate the support that this government from Somerville is giving us, and also Pat Jalen, Christine Barber, and all the other reps who have been involved, being very responsive to their constituents. So thank you. So somebody else can have a couple of seconds.
Thank you so much, Helen. All right, so Paul Bamberger, and in the queue, if we have number 43 and number 45, actually.
Hi, I'm Paul Bamberger. I live on Grove Street in Medford. I live with about 11 other people. Most of us do not own cars. I am objecting to the elimination of the 80 and the rerouting of the 94. We use those buses every day. We get it at the corner of High Street and Boston Avenue. The 80 is a pretty frequent route. They're talking about eliminating it. Oh, before I forget, I wanted to completely support all those amazing petitions that the other Medford residents got. That has got to mean a lot to you if democracy still means anything these days. Those petitions are, should be given a lot of weight. Don't eliminate the 80. Just don't eliminate it. That's crazy. The other fallback position we have is that if you have to eliminate the 80, increase the 94 to be a frequent route, like every 20 minutes. But really, we hope that you can find a way to keep both the 80 and the 94. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to step to the side just to get my next list. Sorry, everyone. So 43, Joe Bergio, and then in the queue, we'll have number 45 and number 46.
I like to talk to people, not to the camera. It's, I'm hearing a lot of really interesting stuff today. I'm a Somerville, Somerville resident. I've been living there most of my life. I've been taking the 87 and 88 since I was a teenager to visit my friends in Somerville. There, you know, we hear a lot about increased frequency, but how do you, what does increased frequency mean on a route that you take away? You know? Access. We talk about access here to, you know, from in the city, you know, of Somerville and in our neighborhoods to the core city in downtown where there are jobs and everything. But we have these great new Green Line stops. You're taking away, you're taking away the bus that gets you to the Green Line stop. Somerville is a long, dense rectangle. We've heard from some of you, but not from, from you, about the trips that people take within their, their communities. You know, I'm going to hit retirement age during the implementation plan, and I'm going to depend more and more on these kind of short, short-run trips, and you're taking away the 87, the 88, the 89, which I used to ride to work all the time. There are people, parents with kids, commuters, students going to the Orange Line. There's shopping, businesses, healthcare providers all along that route. It's going to go away. So I'm, I'm really advocating, you know, don't take away service. Bring service in everywhere. That's great. Safe service, fast service. You know, we, we want that, but we don't want to lose service. We really don't want to lose service. It means, it means a lot to a lot of people, and it enables them to, you know, to live better, fuller lives. I mean, it's... And I want to advocate to you guys, you know, keep up the fight.
We are at time.
Okay, but thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. So number 45, Will Justice. In the queue, we have number 46 and number 47, please. Will?
All right, so my name is Will Justice of Reclaim Roxbury and also T Riders Union. So we're noticing a lot of changes are going for people who are not from here, and you're trying to bring people here and accommodate them, and they're not even here yet. It is, and the funny thing is, I'm finding it hilarious that like, it's, it's not just my neighborhood now. I'm like, wow, okay, so you're just disrespectful to everybody. I'll be, because we, we're used to it. I mean, look at what they did to Eggleston. They have no means to, it used to be a stop on the L, and the L was taken away, and now they have no means to get downtown except for going way all around. It does say a convoluted way. It's so funny to me that now we have this whole no communication at all with any of these communities. It's like, literally, y'all are making these decisions here and never talk to the people. When are you going to come to the people and talk to them and figure out, hey, what would you like? I mean, it's kind of like your job, but whatever, like, if I didn't do my job, I'd get fired. But you know what I'm saying, somehow, you'll say, you're not doing your job, and you still have one, and I don't get it. And I, I don't understand how this is able to continue to happen over and over again. I mean, we're saying the same things over and over again. Why don't you have community people here in position to give their input and to have more outreach? Why are we not having this outreach? It's like you don't care. No, it's not like you don't care. I know you don't. And that's the problem. Like, you know, saying, when y'all going to start actually stepping up and doing your actual job? Or else maybe you should be replaced. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Will. Okay, is there 46? I'm sorry, did I? So Ed Cutting, and then 47, and 48 in the queue.
Name's Ed Cutting. I came in from Wakefield, and as you probably know, it takes a lot for us to come into the city. This is the first time in three years I've been inside of South County Line. I am opposed to, yes, I did see the Will URL on the bus the other day. Meant nothing to me. There has been little to no coverage at all in, I'm talking about Route 136, Route 137, which run up from Melrose through Reading. And as I, like I said, it's been very, it's been in trouble. I'm a good researcher. I couldn't find much about what's going on other than, as best I can tell, you're eliminating North Ave. You're talking about developments, things that developed. What, 50 years ago was the old Reading dump is now a large retail establishment. Jordan's Furniture, if you're driving on 128, you can see it. There's a shopping center there. There's Staples and so forth. There's two supermarkets across the street, Allsides, Rest and so forth. All kinds of places where low-income people work. They need a bus to get there, or they ain't going to have a job because employers aren't tolerant. So you need to have frequent service. You're talking about eliminating it. A little bit for itself, the other side of 128. There are two, three, three brand-new, big, five, six-story multifamily transit-oriented developments. It's been mentioned by a sort of lawyers who are trying to do a zoning change that there are six more on the other side of the street that plan to put in where the Lord Wakeville is. Wakefield is considered a transit-oriented community, a bus-oriented community. How can we do that without a bus? Okay? Second, second issue, I question your racial statistics because you're talking about population versus usage. Third, the train is... Third, the train is not ADA accessible. The Greenwood Station comes first step on right here. That's not ADA accessible. So you are replacing an ADA accessible bus with a non-AD accessible train. 32 years after the passage of the American Display Act, I do not believe that is legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Ann? Ann Barker. And then in the queue, number 48. And then we are going to skip to number 63 from 48, so.
Hi, I'm Ian Barker. I've lived in the Fenway for 41 years and I'm here for the 55 bus and for service on the 39 bus on Huntington Ave. There's some good things about the proposal, the frequent service, the same schedule, seven days a week. I think that's huge. But if the goal is to have fewer transfers, if we don't have the 55 bus, people will have to take a bus to Kenmore and that means that one seat ride becomes a two seat ride. If you want to transfer, then the two seat ride becomes a three or a four seat ride. It just becomes so inconvenient. And I think the proposal, it looks like to me that it's been put together for the benefit of commuters and that's fine. You know, they need better routes to go to work. But those of us who live in the community, we need our local buses. We need to get around on the local buses. We need the 55 and we need the 39. And people have to think about, you know, what, you know, what everyone's needs are. If there's a need for the, the LMA to Kendall, then that can be a separate route. But let us have our 55 with full service and with going down to downtown.
Thank you, Ann. Raymond Nagum, is that correct? And then in the queue, we will have number 63 and number 64 in the queue.
I'm a Medford Hillside resident. I ride the bus and the MBTA subways every day. In Medford Hillside, 96th Branch through George Street will be cut. 94th Branch on High Street will be cut. 80 bus will be eliminated. Those are not improvements to the MBTA system. People rely on those buses. I understand high speed, long bus routes are important, but the branch routes, the small routes, also important. We have to have multi-scale transportation. Subways are great for long rides. Buses should go through neighborhoods. I ride the bus. People are not there for a good time. They're, they need those buses, right? Nobody rides the bus for pleasure. And it's, they go to the bank, right? So, so I would just say, don't eliminate the small, what you might think are inefficient routes. They serve people and they should be part of the network.
Thank you, Raymond.
So my name is Mella Bush and I am the Director of Transit Oriented Development and the T Riders Union at ACE, Alternatives for Community and Environment. There are a number of things that rise to the surface here. First of all, the outreach has been flawed and it has, I've been out for this week and last week, speaking to people, Nubian Square and other places. And every single person for the past three weeks actually has said, I have no idea what you're talking about. And what do you mean? And then there were little W's and T's with another letter of the alphabet at the end that I don't want to bring up. And so they're very concerned that they are not going to be able to get to where they're going. So I'm going to bring up a few, a few, a few examples. The 14 was mentioned here. And we should honor our veterans more than saying, we're going to cut the entire segment of Route 14 that runs from VA Hospital to Nubian Square out with no replacement and tell people to take the Green Line and 66 or the T-39 that's going to Porter Square now to get stuck in traffic, bogged down and cause more climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. So that's not, I went, we went for a ride with T staff and showed them everything on the 14 bus route that was necessary, whether it was senior housing. And that segment has a number of senior housing facilities as well as schools that people won't be able to get to. The 29 bus, I have no idea why they did this. The 29 bus was invented. The route was invented and it ran concurrently with the 28 bus, but it went through and looped through the Franklin Field Housing Projects so that people, and I need to go on a little further because you all interrupted my time with the mic.
We've reset it. We've reset the time, Mella. So if you could just conclude your remarks, just to be fair to everyone.
Yeah. So the, the 29 bus is now going to start at Ashmont, go through the projects and take people back to Ashmont Station. It currently runs down Blue Hill Ave from Mattapan to Jackson Square. If that bus was done like that for safety, I have to tell the reason for this bus. Seniors live at the back of that housing project and they made that loop through there to get them back out so they could connect in a food desert to get groceries and things like that. So that they wouldn't be mugged in the housing projects. Nobody just wanted to ride around on a bus and go to Ashmont Station. They've never done that before.
So we do have to conclude.
We have not. Also, the 15 bus, I know you're going to leave with the mic so I can talk a little louder. The 15 bus is, that runs at 4:35 AM is being cut out. It is a special bus that gets people the jobs at the airport, goes to Haymarket. But because it was confusing for the planners, they said, oh, let's fix that 15 bus and get rid of it. And so it's things like this in this plan that are not working. It's not being done right. In a system-wide, our open house at Bowling Building has 21 people. And what is this? This is not representative of the riders that are going to be cut off from everything, medical care, school and everything else.
Thank you for your comment. I also do want to emphasize tonight that we are also accepting still written comments through Sunday, especially, I know there's a lot of details and two minutes is not an extensive amount of time to get through all of the details. So we really encourage written comments as well as the verbal comments tonight. So 64 is Adam Shaw. Do I have that right? And then 65 and 66 in the queue, please.
Hello, my name is Adam Shaw. I live in Roxbury and I wanted to say that I feel like my neighborhood of Roxbury isn't being really well represented in this redesign process. I'm going to give two examples, one general and one that's personal to me. The first is that we have two main transportation hubs in Roxbury, Nubian Station and Ruggel Station. And they're connected by seven different bus routes. And this redesign process would cut that number from seven to one. So our two busiest transportation hubs in our neighborhood would only be connected by one bus route. And then my personal level is that I'm a student at UMass Boston and I have figured out five different ways to get to UMass Boston from Nubian Station. And I've used all five. All five would be altered or even erased by this redesign process. They are the number 47, the number 41, the SL5, access to Ruggel Station and the number eight. And the one that would mainly affect me is the number 41 that directly services JFK UMass. I also want to say that I'm not opposed to the expansion of public transportation. I'm studying to get my bachelor's degree in environmental science at the moment. So I'm a massive supporter of public transportation and its environmental help. But I feel like the way that things are going, these high profile incidents that keep happening on the MBTA, on the subway lines, is just going to continue to erode trust in the system. And if that is not resolved before this redesign goes into effect, people are going to be too scared to take the train. They're going to be too scared to take the bus. Eventually, it's going to reach a point where the state of Massachusetts has a statewide empty bus network and a crumbling train station.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, so number 65 is Mark Millman and then, oh.
I think there's one point tonight, but listening to the comments, other things have come up. So the points I came to make, which I've made before and will make again because I think it deserves frequent representation, is that one distance, high frequency bus groups are the ones most subject to bus bunching, which badly affects the liability. I think that you have the technology, either one time. I think that you have the technology in place, but you need to devote more labor hours to reducing bus bunching. That's the first. A number of people here have said that more transfers do not make for a simpler or easier for users. I have to support that. Furthermore, it's become apparent that the rise, the change in the system to permit a half hour, sorry, excuse me, a half mile minimum watch and access point, especially in the face of increasing climate change and associated changes in weather. One more thing that I would recommend reconsidering is that from every scene, MBTA appears to be moving from a RIG system to a PUG and RIR system. And I think perhaps more attention needs to be given to the RIG approach.
Thank you, Mark. So number 66 is Nicholas Johnston. And in the queue, we have 67 and number 68.
Hi, yeah, I'm Nick Johnston. I live in Medford, specifically the West Medford area. There's a lot of sort of stated goals that I really appreciate about this bus redesign and a lot of numbers that look very good. And I, I don't have the data to dispute that at all and I'm glad to hear that there are a lot of positives. But in my own little corner of the world, there are also a number of things that I'm kind of worried about, as everyone is. So for me, in the West Medford area, I, I cannot afford a car and that's not looking to change anytime soon. I rely entirely on the bus network right now. There, there, you know, there's no T stop around me. And for me, the really excellent and best routes there that have been right next to me are the 80 and the 94. The rerouting of the 94 is going to make it much less convenient to get to, often harder. And in times, as other people have mentioned, of inclement weather, borderline impossible to get to, which cuts me off from Davis Square, which cuts me off from visiting friends, which cuts me off from just kind of getting around. And the removal of the 80 does the same thing. You know, it prevents access to the Green Line, which is, feels strange, given its recent expansion. And yeah, I just, basically I'll be relying exclusively on the 95. So the, the sort of feeling of increased service is definitely not reaching me, where two of my three buses are either gone entirely or much more difficult to get to. The change to the 94 will also really negatively impact my commute to work and make it much more difficult. And yeah, other folks here have said a lot of what I'm saying before, but I just kind of wanted to add one more voice to it. I've been very impressed with the efforts. A lot of people have been put forward. You've all spoken really well. So thank you very much for that and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Nick. So I have 67 is Patrick Sewell. And number 68 and number 69 in the queue, please.
Thanks, my name's Patrick Sewell. I live near Forest Hills and Roselandale. I really support this project. I, I think it really adds a lot to the network as a whole. And every time I review it, I notice that I have more connections than I had before. Forest Hills gains a direct one-seat ride to Harvard Square. That's incredible. And a direct one-seat ride to Boston Medical Center, where my spouse works. So I really support that. However, I do have a specific point I'd like to address. In West Roxbury and Roselandale, there is a, the, the 35 and 36 are shown in your marketing materials as dark blue, meaning that they will run every 15 minutes from 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM. However, in talking with, with your staff, I've learned that that is not the case because these are overlapping routes. They are only planned to run every 30 minutes each. So combined, every 15 minutes from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. I find that very misleading and I really believe that you should plan to deliver the service you've shown in the marketing materials. You should not present this as something that runs from 5:00 to 1:00 AM when it's not actually planned to do that. Forest Hills needs late night service. There are a lot of people that come through Forest Hills late at night and I'm one of them. I often take the train that arrives there around 11:10 and then I have to wait about 20 minutes to get any bus. And so you really should deliver the service that you've, you've shown in your marketing materials. Secondly, I'll affirm what the gentleman said a couple of speakers ago. Bus bunching is a real problem and especially it's going to be a real problem if you're trying to use two routes to meet that level of service. Please find a way to deal with bus bunching, especially where routes overlap. You have a great opportunity here. There are a lot of overlapping routes in, especially on Washington Street and West Roselandale. Please find a way to, to spread them out and increase the overall level of service. And finally.
Actually, you're at time. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have number 68, Brenda Howard. And in the queue, we have 69 and 70.
Discuss a little bit about the 39 and the 55 bus, but it's already been discussed already. So I won't go into a big, long spiel about that. But my heart does go out for all these people sitting in this room with petitions. And I think you need to listen to these people. What I heard here is awful, that their bus route might be cut. I've taken some of these buses. And to see these people coming there on a hot day and whoever sits up there and makes these decisions, it's disgraceful. And I was just told, this data just came out about this meeting and about these bus routes today. Some of these changes. Well, I think it's about the meeting in here that was supposed to come about. Well, there's something about the data. The data collection, two days ago. Yeah. Do you see what I'm talking about? Yeah. So that's a disgrace. So I don't know how these people can sit here and make changes. And all these people here are getting older, disabilities. Some people may be blind. Some people have all kinds of things wrong. And all you sit there and make changes, could care less about people. It's all about the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. So I have at number 69, Ishra Bhulab. I'm sorry. And in the queue, number 70 and 71.
Hi, this is Ishra Bhulab. I am here on behalf of the 55 and I am an organizer with Fenway CDC. And I am also here in solidarity with Reclaim Roxbury, T Riders Union, Somerville and Medford Communities. I just want to emphasize, I think a lot of great points have been made and I want to emphasize that across all of these comments, there are very common themes, many of which include seniors being neglected and underrepresented as part of this process. There's the issue of bus bunching. There is a lot that has been said about routes that serve low income communities that are being removed or service reduced over there. And the 55 falls in line with some of those. And a lot of us from the 55 Coalition have attended many of your meetings and we have not felt heard. And unfortunately, not many of the people who do use the 55 or care about the 55 were able to make it here. As Councilor Bach mentioned, the 55 once could bring people here right outside and that no longer is the case. That is why I would like to present feedback submitted in the form- That is why I would like to present feedback submitted in the form of a petition to speak upon the comments of those who are unable to make it here. We call on the MBTA to include Copley Square as part of the rerouting of the 55, because without Copley Station, the 55 would not be what it is, and therefore, the increased frequency and service, which we appreciate, would no longer be applicable. Thank you, and I really do hope that you listened to what everyone else had to share, because we shouldn't be doing this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We have number 70 is Tom Favoloro, and then number 71 in the queue, and I think that's our last sign-up for tonight, but, oh, there's more in the back? Oh, sorry. My fault, hold on one moment. Thank you. Tom?
Thanks for listening. I take the 354 in Woburn every day, we'll be going from one bus to no buses. I know it stinks to go from like multiple to fewer, but that's what's going on in our neighborhood. I will say, what I've noticed, I printed out a bunch of flyers and give them to people on the bus, and I haven't heard anyone say that they knew that this was coming. I do think, like, when it comes to a bus, like, the people are on there, you know where they are, you know they can't go anywhere. I do think letting people know that, like, this specific bus that you're on is slated to be cut would go a long way. So I think that's like the main thing that I'd like to see happen. You know, I think when you're on the bus and you hear, hey, better bus network coming, it's easy to think like, okay, better, that sounds good, I guess, like, that sounds great. It's not obvious to people that better means their specific bus will be gone. So let people know.
Thank you, Tom. 71, and then in the queue is number 97. And is there anyone else who has a ticket that I've missed? Did I miss a whole sheet of paper? I am so sorry. So let me try that one more time. It will be 71, and then the queue will be 80 and 81. Sorry. So, yep, no, it's okay. So Eileen?
I'm Eileen McGuire, and I live in the Fenway area, but I am not standing here as one person. I am standing here as 125 senior citizens who live in St. Cecilia House on Kilmarneck Street. I was only in the lobby today for about four hours, and I got 50 people to sign a petition to save our 55 coming to Copley. In order to do that, I translated it into nine different languages that are represented in my building alone, nine languages. I have not seen the MBTA print out anything in Russian, in Ukrainian, in Albanian, in Creole, in Spanish, yes, Portuguese, I mean, Mandarin, Cantonese, that's who I represent. They, trying to inform them about this was insane, you know? I had to get other residents to translate for them. So the communication has not been clear. I spent one day going up and down Boylston's Brookline Ave, looking for where the talk at the station or something, I couldn't find it. I called, I emailed, where is it, where is it? I don't know, there was no communication. The other thing I want you to do is close your eyes and imagine your mother or your grandmother, living and having to walk a half-mile to get to a bus. A half-mile! What if she just had knee surgery? Have to walk a half-mile. It's disgusting that I live in the city of Boston and I can't get to downtown without walking. Well, now I have to walk eight tenths of a mile to get to Fenway, because I'm not gonna take the bus to Kenmore, which is a seedy station, and don't have me go there. You would not have your mother go there at 10 o'clock at night. I have to walk to Fenway in order to get to downtown Boston, and I live in Boston. That's sad.
Thank you so much. So in the queue, we have 80 and 81, and my apologies for missing that sheet earlier. Did not mean to create confusion. Enrique Thomas?
Omriki. Hello, I just wanted to say thank you for doing all this work. I have a few comments, one of which, I really appreciate the increased frequency on the T-39 between Central Square and Cambridge and Longwood. But the fact that that goes to Porter and the 91 is eliminated, I'm disappointed in as a direct connection between Central and Sullivan is very important, in my opinion. I also believe that the 83 going to Central rather than Kendall is very important. Currently, the 351 has two buses, and there are a lot of routes with overcrowded buses. It would be great if at least one of those buses could be used on a route that actually gets more ridership. I talked to a driver that had only five riders throughout the entire afternoon peak. The 86 and 66, this Dawes Island in Harvard Square is already overcrowded, but with the 86 terminating there as well, that will become even more of a problem. So they could maybe stop at Waterhouse at Mass Ave and loop Cambridge Common like the 71 and 73 used to do. The 62 and 76 need full-time frequency, including on weekends, especially for people at Hanscom Air Force Base, that's their only way to get downtown, and having that service only on weekdays isn't very helpful. I also agree that the trolley buses would be very helpful, and with battery-assisted trolley buses, that could help with things like the 77, so they wouldn't have to wait and charge, and the 71 could use, could charge while in motion and then continue on the rest of the 70 past Watertown Square. Speaking of which, the fact that there's both a 70 and a T-70 bus is very confusing. I have more thoughts, they are, I made a YouTube video about this with my friend Jaclyn, who's sitting back there, that is at omriki.com, O-M-R-I-Q-U-I.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will also note that if people do have questions about the routing, and if there's anything that's confusing or have questions, Rob and Shalini are at the table, and they're there to answer questions. We also do have all the materials tonight in multiple languages. I know for the woman who was, had comments for her building, if you want to bring any resources, we have those resources at the sign-in table, they're available, I think, in nine languages, so feel free to grab some, and staff can help you with that. Okay, number 81 is Gregory Obannon, followed by now what I believe will be the last comment of the night, which is 97, unless I skipped someone again. No? Okay, Gregory?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Gregory Obannon. I am a bus driver at the Cabot Garage, and I want to speak against these new bus proposals. One of the routes that we have to take to get to Ruggles Station is the 47, and if you cut the 47, we have to take two buses to get to Ruggles Station. So that's, that's the first thing. And we don't have, operators aren't allowed to have cell phones, so relying on the subway system is also a bad idea. So for example, so it takes us about 20 minutes to get to Ruggles, if we get off at Nubian, we have to take one of the eight buses that go to Ruggles. The second thing is, I also do the 500 routes that go from Boston to Watertown to Walt Dam. The problem I have is, you can't have, let me see, the 61 can't do all four of those routes, because the problem is, 553, 554, 556, 558, all go different directions. So that's the problem. So the 553 and 554 both go the same direction, and they split off at Watertown, and not Watertown, Walt Dam Center. The 556 goes to Walt Dam Highlands, and I think the 558 goes to Riverside. So they all go different directions, and the 558 serves Beemis, which is a part of Watertown. And the last thing I have to say is, I'm looking at the people who do in the proposal, there's no one who looks like me, not person of color, but a bus driver. We know the routes, we know everybody that goes on the bus, we know what buses, we know what buses are crowded at what time, and we know what we're working, what not working. I'm just sad that no one's listened to us. And lastly, you have the extended number four bus, there's nobody on the number four bus, I did that before, sometimes I ride up and down, there's no one on the four bus, but you want to extend it up to Seaport, up to North Station, no reason why.
Thank you. Thank you, Gregory. So number 97, Mo Genesis?
So hi, my name is Brother Mo. I am a local brother from the Boston, Mass area, born and raised here, and it seems like a lot of issues have been touched on, and I've been having my share of issues. And I got so many issues that I can go on for days, but if I can speak of one that is bothersome to me is, in my neighborhood, where I live, in the Mission Hill neighborhood, very interesting section of town, where I'm on the borderline of Jamaica Plain, Roxbury and Brookline. Buses that I have to take all the time are like the 39, 66, 60, the 14. So I'm gonna focus more on our vets, because I don't know, I've heard that somebody might have mentioned them, but I want to talk about our vets in the VA Hospital and the MBTA that circulates around that area. Now, we here in this country, I've seen year in, year out, every Fourth of July, everybody gets ready, and they put their red, white, and blue on, and they talk about how much they love this country. But all year, I've seen how these vets in this country are treated. They're in front of 7-Eleven asking you for change, and you walk by them like they're literal pieces of shit, excuse my French. And they fought for your rights to have everything you have today. So I think it's our duty to make sure that that 14 bus, the 39, the green line, and everything that services our vets to the VA Hospital, they deserve that. And if we have to argue about that in 2022, how far have we come as a country? So I live in that neighborhood, and I see what these drivers are going through. Now, I just need our drivers to be on the same side. I have plenty of family members who work for the T, a lot of such have retired, that means they did their time. I have friends that I went to school with that are still working for the MBTA and family members, and they see the problem. I know once upon a time, the MBTA used to put people through like a psychological test just to get that position. Now, whatever the T is going through today, they have a lot of new T drivers who are causing chaos on these streets, and I'm one of them. Where the MBTA police knows my face and name, they have pictures of my ID. I've been mistreated like a lot of other people have been mistreated. So how can they turn around and tell us, one second, that we, if someone's telling you, listen, I don't have enough cash to get on, I don't have cash on me right now, and they kick us off? That's a problem, because last time I checked, they weren't supposed to do that. They're not supposed to do that, and they're doing this every day, every day, every single day. When I was an essential worker, I was working, and I dealt with these same, put that mic right back here.
We are at time.
I was working on these issues. Can you please put the mic back? We need, we need people like you to do your job correctly, even you. You're not above the rules, lady. So like I'm saying, I'm talking, and don't cut me off.
We do have to wrap up the remarks.
I let you watch him talk, other people, they had to talk longer than me. I know what I'm saying, defending you, but speaking about the vets in this city...
I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up your remarks.
I need you to put the mic back so I can say my speech, and I need you and her not to cut me off. That's not why you're here. Do your job. Like I was saying, we have a lot of problems in this city, and they need to be addressed, and I'm not gonna let people try to silence me and tell me I can't talk long enough for what I should say. There is something going wrong in this city, and I've met plenty of black, white, and Latino people that are from the city, and we are tired. We are tired of being mistreated. I'm sitting here watching bus drivers even kick students off the bus, because they don't have fear. So you guys gotta get your stuff together. What was in charge of the MBTA? What you're doing on, can you please put the mic back?
We do have to wrap up. Just be sure to...
This is the problem in America. This is the problem. We got people like you two, mostly white women, who think they're above the law. This is why Amber Heard lost the court. White women in America need to know that what they're doing is wrong. This doesn't mean every white woman in America is wrong, but white women like this, people, you see them, there are, see these two? They have a problem in our country. So who got the balls, because I got the balls to stand up and say, what they're doing is wrong. What they're doing is wrong. And they treat everybody wrong. They involve black women, white people, they treat them wrong. What's the problem now?
So...
Welcome to the game. Welcome to the game. Welcome to the game. They call my people, they're looking at you white...
So I do wanna, so I do wanna... So I do want to thank everyone for their comments tonight, and I do, really do want to emphasize, there's still time to provide feedback, and we are accepting written comments. I am now gonna turn it over to Doug to provide some closing remarks.
We want to thank 55 ones, thank the seven day home service, and thank you about the stay down.
Thank you. Thanks for that comment, appreciate it. Another comment? Yeah.
The other thing that I just remembered is that, especially with these increased transfers, it's really essential that we have a fair system that does not make people pay extra when they have to make more than one or two transfers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you all very much for attending this meeting and giving your comments. Certainly been a humble experience listening to everyone's concerns and feedback on this. And I just wanted to assure everybody that we take this extremely seriously, and we are gonna review every single comment that came in throughout this process and make meaningful changes to the map based on all of the feedback that you've given us both here tonight, up until the end of the month, and throughout the last three months of public outreach that we've done. Thank you all very much for coming tonight, really appreciate it, and thank you for helping us make the new bus network better.